Okay, I hereby call this meeting to order at this time of the mayor and board of commissioners. Good to see everybody here today. We'll stand for the Lord's Prayer followed by the National Anthem led by John Anderson. The Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Give us our trespasses, and we forgive those trespasses. And lead us not into the flesh, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory of God. Play it with John.
Anderson salute, play it, I play the lead.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all. Where was that National Anthem? Roll call please.
Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Bojor.
Here.
Commissioner Richardson.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Stockton.
Here.
Approval of minutes from the monthly meeting of November 4th, 2019. You've had a chance to look in your packet when the do's over. All agreeable with them, all in favor of approval, aye.
Aye.
Hold likewise, motion does carry. On the distribution, the recorder has provided all the posted distributions for November, but we'll take a lap motion until January so the final entries for November can be posted and we'll have those next month. Public hearing, we have no old business, new business. Business we will open bids on two projects. First, the marketplace building. This is a building that's gonna be on the marketplace that we've been in the process of about a year talking about, a place to have a restroom and to wash and it should be a good addition. This is from Valley Building Supply. Building will be eight by twelve with kitchen area, bathroom area, and a maintenance closet. It has specifications of how it will be built, treated lumber, subflooring, commercial key entries, insulation, stainless steel, commercial sink, spray faucet, paper Spencer, electric heater, two outdoor spigots, square D one hundred amp breaker box, small frame bathroom mirror included, two color extension paint for the exterior. The exterior doors will be painted inside and out. No other interior painting will be included, three dimensional shingles on the outside. There will be a mechanic room. There will also be commercial rated flooring in the kitchen and bathroom area. There will be LED lights installed in the kitchen on the fixture. Just a few of the things that's included in this bid. Bid?
Mayor, could you go back and tell the size of that thing again?
Eight by twenty.
I understood eight by twelve. Okay, that's good.
Could've been eight by twelve, I don't know. Eight by twenty. Twenty thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars. Twenty thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars. Yeah, it is portable and we can move it if a railroad ever says to move it, it can be Any questions in comments?
Is that the only bid we received on there?
What's the plan on the end board?
We have a grant for it that pays a hundred percent.
When did this start coming about? I've never been told anything about it.
Well, I think it was out during that time, Bill, that we...
It's been, it's been ongoing. We got a grant probably four months, four or five months ago and we've been looking at how to go about it and the best case scenario was just put it, put it out to bid and if I'm understanding Chuck, the price of it falls well within the grant.
With, with this price, we'll also be able to add some electric to the downtown area that will help with festivals. We'll also be able to extend some water in, in, in the Main Street Marketplace area. The grant was fifty thousand, is that correct?
Yep. Fifty thousand.
So, this is, when we first started talking about it, basically the grant was gonna pay for the building, but the college were able to get the, a mobile building and get the pricing that we, looks like we got and we'll, we'll be able to do a lot more with it to improve the downtown and improve it for festivals, but also improve it in many other ways.
Was it fifty thousand? It won't cover all the expense for doing this?
Uh, yeah, it should, it should. Our intention is not to use any taxpayer dollar on that.
Do you need a motion for approval? Any more discussion, questions?
If it be possible. Well, we need to vote on whether to do it or not.
I'm making motion for approval. Okay, is there a second?
Third second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Hold likewise, motion does carry.
All right now, can we have a little discussion about that?
Well, yeah, go ahead if you'd like.
If it be possible and they, if we could, go ahead and help them and if it be an extra cost, if we could have runners put in under the building, whatever it is, and we fit the big forklift and we had a way to go down, pick it up, set it on a flatbed and move it. If it be two hundred dollars more, but we need some way, oh, that big forklift will pick it up. If we had a flatbed and haul it, we, if we need to move it and we wouldn't lose the use of it that way.
What's, what's the length going now, on the fours?
What are they, are about seven feet, aren't they, on that big one?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, probably. The reason I was asking because based on the twenty foot length, obviously you couldn't pick it up that way, you'd have to pick it up crossways, but my assumption is that you're running parallel.
What I was thinking about Sammy's coming in in the middle of it, maybe putting a runner shot there and go in and pick it up, set it on a flatbed, we could do it up for them, 'cause it wouldn't be any longer than a flatbed, 'cause those, they didn't have his damn foot on it.
That's something we could probably talk with Valley about the construction.
I don't think that'll be much of an additional cost.
Well, I, I would think it'd be a couple, two by sixes or two by eights.
Yeah, it shouldn't, shouldn't add much cost to it and we could probably do that. And we're looking, the way we're gonna install it, it's gonna be sort of recessed just a little bit in the ground so that we'll be able to meet ADA requirements. So, I, I think we can do that.
Well, what I was gonna say Buster is, is Chuck and I could get with Valley and, and look at the, the blocking layout and how the weight and the loading would be distributed once you pick that thing up. Well, I'm just talking about for the, for the cantilever of the, of the building.
All right, so Chuck, you can take care of that, you and Sammy. Thank you Buster. We will now have opening bids for a leaf collector machine, leaf collector machine. We've got three bids. And after we open the bids, we'll take a recess so that Richard Buster can look these bids over, give them time to see what we will load on. First bid, this is from CMI Equipment Sales. Leaf collector machine. Pretty well gives the pictures, uh, I'll let, I'll let them go over the details on this. First bid from CMI is forty-seven thousand nine ninety-five. Forty-seven thousand nine ninety-five for CMI Equipment Sales out of Goodlookville, Tennessee. Second bid is from Strong Fellas Incorporated. They are located Maryville. It gave, gives the specification. Wendy one hundred model, fifty-one thousand three fifty-seven. Fifty-one thousand three fifty-seven. This is also from same spring fellow. It's a Wendy four hundred, trailer mounted leaf vacuum. Fifty-five thousand seven fifty-seven. Fifty-five thousand seven five seven. Okay, we have the bids here, call for a recess, give Buster and Richard and anybody else a chance to look these over and come back and we'll have a decision. In the meantime, Tommy, you got a song for us?
I'll do a soft sheet, man. That clears out fast.
Good to see you back Tom.
Good to be around you folks.
Are you enjoying high school?
I'm, I'm not burning it down yet, I'm not locking myself out and I think I've got Eric Weaver surprised, he's always walking past with his keys in case I need him. We'll get that sidewalk done in front of it soon, that'll be nice.
Yeah, that's gonna be a big asset.
It is.
Looks good. This weather held up. I don't think they're far away from finishing it, are they Chuck?
No, it's, it's getting closer every day there. Working out a few issues on that road, but.
Did they have a race the other night? Did they race? They called it off?
It was light.
But it's still a good time for all, it's kinda wet. Brian, you got any updates coming up?
On what?
Radio stations?
No, not really. Basketball broadcast getting ready to start, be on the Harry Friday.
Any house, the needy family?
Seems to be going well, that's what I just got a text now about a homeless family up here. Looks about to wind up right now, seems to be, that's out of the air, everything, happened to us. But we're having a good turnout, we, uh, we'll be giving out our, our distribute, our, our toys and clothing on, uh, Thursday the twelfth and Friday the thirteenth. And, and think of the dates and get them straight and pass them out.
Now, where will they be picking them up this year?
If we do, we were gonna try to build them up on Thursday, but we'll still be in basement here this year.
Down here.
We're just not, we're just not gonna have enough time to get it done. But anybody that you guys talked to, uh, tell them to let us know and we'll get an application, we'll be glad to help them out. We, we had to, we had to turn up people.
What time you gonna start on those days?
Eight o'clock.
Have you got quite a few applicants this year already?
We, we did, we've had several, we have, we had an alley store kinda early, which is a good thing, it was better than all coming at one time. We've, we've had, had several that, uh, has kinda moved into the areas, we had no, we got work for church and stuff.
Now, the needy family fund is fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Out of Brown.
Uh, primary school.
Primary school. And then, uh, the memorial, candlelight service at Memorial Park is the thirteenth. Uh, right, I said the thirteenth. Got a lot going on.
Seems like it all went together.
And the following Saturday's when the needy family fund will fill the baskets and everything. They're all from fourteenth and the next Saturday they'll pack it all, put it up.
People. Do you bring out the McDonald's? Two women possibly, their kids possibly home and sick with the illness. I mean, you don't have to do it, you're saleskeep, guys, I don't know one of your guys or anything. No, I mean, no. Thank you, gentlemen. Yes. I want to thank you, I want to thank you number first of all.
Saturday, okay, we got four hundred.
Better for me. Better, better.
Yeah.
You're dope.
Charlie? Getting closer to that.
I'll leave y'all a couple months this way. While the party.
That, that'd be a sign.
You see where it's coming from, like you worked.
That was my goal, to outlast Buster and Billy Wayne, I just couldn't do it.
I wouldn't move along here as soon as I get through.
If you're fine, we're fine.
Do it here.
I may have somebody in place to run.
Do we have a?
Make a recommendation and we purchase the four hundred, I think it was a forty-five hundred to four fifty budget, price of forty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hold likewise, motion does carry. Thank you.
Thank you, fellas. And thank you all for bidding, appreciate it.
We took applications and interviewed and Superintendent Jenkins and Commissioner West have selected Cedric Scruggs for the open position in the street department. Is there a motion that we accept and approve this applicant?
Another motion we approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hold likewise, motion carries.
Again, thanks, fellas.
Commissioner Stockton has an auxiliary officer who would like to appoint part-time, Commissioner Stockton?
This guy's, I'm gonna put him on auxiliary, the, uh, we always do that for a reason and gives us time to fill these people out, you know, they work with everybody in their education, want to know, but his name is Christian LaQuire. And, uh, if you wanna know more about him, babe, you have to fill us in, 'cause I do not know him. He from here, Eddie?
Yes.
His last name is LaQuire?
LaQuire.
LaQuire?
Yes.
Do you put that in form of motion, Mr. Stockton?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
End it. More discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hold likewise, motion does carry. We have received a request from Midtrans to amend the lease for our rental agreement on the fire hall landing pad. Midtrans currently pays eleven hundred and fifty dollars a month for the use of the helipad and access to the living quarters, which they understand is no longer available. We have, uh, moved the emergency operations center there and has been for some time and they understand that. They have offered to increase the rent to fifteen hundred dollars per month. We agreed to sign a lease amendment which increases the term to one year. Either party can terminate with a thirty day notice prior to the end of the one year term. Do I hear a motion from the board at this time to agree to the fifteen hundred dollars per month lease for one year, or do we need to wait and put this on the January agenda?
I would prefer it be on the agenda so we can talk about it just a little bit more. I don't know the, I don't know the details of the lease and what all that constraints that may put on our building, unless you can, so we can answer those right now.
There's no constraint, I know, from what, from what I understand. They just want to, uh, I talked to, uh, the guy this afternoon. I think what they're gonna do is just want the use of the pad and the fueling station out there. And they understand that they do need to go up to fifteen hundred dollars a month. That's four hundred and three hundred and fifty dollars increase per month. I think they just wanna kinda make sure that they are secure.
Now, the reason that I asked that, Mayor, is because, uh, we're talking to our county EMS, there's a good possibility that we'll have a second ambulance here at some point in time during that year and I wanted to make sure that we can use that end of the building to house that if necessary, so. I just didn't want it to be to where we couldn't put another ambulance or something on that side of our building, so I just didn't want it to.
Okay, any more discussion? John, you have anything in the, are you familiar with the lease? Jessica, you are, is there anything in there that you're aware of that would?
I don't think it addresses the bare all. Um, and the second amendment doesn't change anything from the first lease except, and John reviewed it also, um, doesn't change anything from the first lease except for the payment and the term. That's, that's basically the amendment and you're going, instead of a month to month, you're committing to one year and you can cancel it at one year with a thirty day notice.
What, what happened in their first proposal?
Initially, they said, hey, just give us a one year lease. And we said, well, why would they do that? Why would they go from a thirty day lease to a one year lease? There's nothing in it for us. So, that's when they came back and offered fifteen hundred a month instead of eleven fifty. So, now they have actually said we'll pay you more if you extend it to a one year lease. So, that has changed since the first draft, but.
But in their first draft, they wanted to be able, they wanted to be able to terminate at any, at any time during the year within the thirty days notice.
I thought it was either party could give thirty days notice.
Yeah, it didn't have to be right, it didn't have to be the last thirty days.
Okay, maybe I'm wrong. You're probably right.
Cause my proposal, that, my recommendation was, if they want to be able to terminate on thirty days notice, anytime during the term, what sauce for the goose, the sauce for the gander, we ought to be able to do that as well and that would take care of your problem.
Right.
I don't know what, I haven't seen whatever the final draft is.
I do think I have it here, I'm just saying.
After I made that suggestion. I just know more. I don't need anybody to put restriction of what.
A party to the other party at least.
Our building.
All right. We will, uh, we'll table this till January unless you just. We will, uh, we'll table this till January unless you just want to vote on it tonight. See any reason why we shouldn't vote on it tonight. This actually goes into effect if we vote on it tonight, January the first.
If it doesn't put any restrictions or he gives us an out for, if they try to put restrictions on any part of our building, if that ambulance, if that other ambulance comes out or comes into play, then I don't have a problem with it. It's been too long since the origi, since I seen the original, looking to know, to tell you right off the top of my head what your best or not.
Is there any way to, to make a motion of approval based on use of that ambulance bay?
Yeah, you can do that.
But... I mean, that, that, that blocks you into using that bay and forces them to force this.
I don't think they will ever have a use for the bay.
I don't see, I don't see a second, our ambulance service coming in here because Sweetwater's not big enough for that.
It's not a second ambulance service, a second county ambulance. Like a day truck that we used to have.
But bay?
Hopefully it's coming by.
Well, I get what interferes with the Medtrans program. And certainly, certainly if we're gonna get an increase to fifteen hundred dollars a month, they're using, they're probably out there for a gas station. I don't see any problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what, if that's what they're wanting to do, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Take that for our ten dollars a month, man, on that late budget.
So, what we can say is you're approving that the mayor execute the lease on the basis that there's clarification that they're not gonna use the bays. Is that accurate?
That would be fine.
Do you make that in form of motion out?
Yes, I'll make that, put that in form of motion.
Is there a second?
There.
Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Pose likewise, motion does carry. Thank you. We need a motion to approve the debt used by Sweetwater Utility Board for the new administration building. We have already voted to authorize the bond, but this is the form to complete act that the debt has been drawn down upon. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Sure.
Any discussion?
I'm going to recuse myself from voting on this based on being architect director of that project.
Okay. Thank you, Sam. All in favor, I?
Aye.
Pose likewise, motion does carry. You may remember we removed janitorial service firm from our budget back in two thousand nine when revenues were tight with the recession. We have not added that line back using existing staff to clean the buildings. With the addition of new SPD buildings with Water Police Department building, it is beginning to get too much for existing staff and a waste of city's resources of higher-paid employees to do cleaning. I believe the recorder has spoken with Commissioner Hughes and Stockton both about the ideal of hiring a part-time employee that could come once a week to clean City Hall and the SPD building. The parks staff would still need the empty trash, to empty the trash once a week, stock the bathrooms with supplies, as well as clean the parks and the facilities. We think opening a part-time job would be able to handle this, to take applications. In January, we could negotiate a salary with the selected candidate. The candidates will need to be someone trustworthy, who can pass a background and security check as they will be cleaning after hours and have access to the buildings. I will open the floor now for discussion. Think this is a good idea. I guess I'm gonna ask Lamar, your boys do most of the cleaning. It's getting a bit...
Our guys are up here two, three times a week doing cleaning with the additional space that Eddie and his group's got. What we're taking over is, of course, police department, the access to the, uh, maybe the park deal. It's getting, it's too much for our guys. We're having full guys off jobs, gone cleaning bathrooms, stock bathrooms and all that. And it's getting a little bit too much for the group of guys we've got. We think that needs our small guys to park service, or we need good part-time people in here to help just clean.
Bill, you have any?
Uh, we're taking on a lot more force base. We, uh, don't have, our people don't do the cleaning now, Lamar does. And I don't know whether they do that twice a week, I believe. Have you thought about, I guess we should have talked to about the part-time employee, what you, the question that they do, how many hours they work? Or details, I guess, what I'm asking for.
Um, I'm most concerned about work comp on the person. We have done, in the past when we did this, it was on a ten ninety-nine basis, and they had to provide their own workers' comp. It's probably gonna be a lot more expensive to hire someone if they're having to provide a worker's compensation policy at the limits the city requires. So, I think probably number-wise, it's gonna be cheaper to pay a part-time employee. And I think it's gonna be fairly minimal. I think they can probably do both those buildings in six hours a week. And so, I don't think it's gonna be a huge budget amendment that may come in with what we've already budgeted for buildings, but...
Once a week enough.
I mean, we can talk about that. We may need it more than once a week, but...
We're talking about this twice a week.
And I, I mean, I think what we'll have to do is let, you know, select the person we want. Let them come in and clean both the buildings and see how long it takes them. And then, that's why I said we can negotiate the salary in January. And just come up with an hourly rate. And that way, they would be covered under our workers' comp, but they wouldn't be having to purchase it. We can probably get them at a lower hourly rate.
So, what we're voting on tonight is to take applications.
We're not voting to hire the person tonight. We're voting to take applications to see if there's interest, if we can find a good person that's trustworthy tonight.
And we can sit down and talk to whoever's select, right?
Sure.
There might be a motion that we take applications for potential part-time employee if we get involved with service.
Is there a second?
I have a question for you, but, exactly what buildings and what, what cleanup are we talking about?
Well, we...
We're talking about City Hall.
For sure, City Hall and the whole Police Department building. So, that includes the area that they're at now where Parks and Rec may be moving and the rest of the Police Department building.
Including probably the old Police Department, the...
Our guys take care of our port.
Okay, all right.
And then...
Well, we're, the new addition, Eddie's moved into, they cleaned up as far as stocking the bathrooms here in City Hall.
I mean, we would just do that ourselves.
What about the...
But they would need to probably empty the trash at least once a week.
If we can get a central location where y'all can put the trash, where we clean up once a week. How about across the railroad?
Depot section?
The depot, um, staff have been cleaning. Now, the Parks and Rec guys are in charge of doing the cleaning. Yeah, and they, um, like the depot staff clean the windows, they clean up the bathrooms, that kind of stuff. The Parks and Rec staff basically make sure it's stocked and, um, the staff at the depot are doing the cleaning there. So, I, I would just say leave that like that. They've got time to be able to... And we're not paying them a high rate. The, the thing, the problem I have with this is we pay the Parks and Rec guys too much for cleaning. I mean, they, yeah, they should be, they should be doing things that they're skilled in and skilled labor that we need them to do and pay someone a cheaper rate.
I've been having none with Prager, darling.
Yeah, inmate labor is helping too. They, they all do. But it takes, it takes the entire apartment to clean for several hours on Monday and Thursday.
We got a motion. Do we have a second?
Not a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Any questions? All in favor, I?
Aye.
Pose likewise, motion carries. In your packet is a revised schedule of fees that been put together for your review. First, we got fees associated with use of city buildings, a recent passed resolution. It sets a twenty-five dollar fee if any employee has to come in to lock up, which would increase if the employees were required to spend more time. Also, a cleaning fee if needed, and security fee as needed on basis for actual cost. There is also a fee for the fire department. I will, uh, let Commissioner Richardson, I think you got something to say about that?
I do. Um, we get, we get a lot of calls that are non-emergency, uh, lift assist. We're getting several for a, one of our healthcare facilities here in the city. I've been to visit them twice. Uh, it's a trend that was increasing, it seemed, over time. Come to find out, they just had one staff member on duty at night and they were calling us to move somebody from overcliner to a bed or something like that numerous times. All hours of the morning, weren't they, John? It seems to have, um, have tapered off a little bit, but, uh, this is a pattern that takes place. It'll taper off for a little bit and then it'll come back around and start doing it again. So, um, I talked to Jessica and I think she talked to John, uh, about putting a per-call fee. What really brought this to head was we were on a automobile accident, both units with entrapment, two weeks ago. And, uh, we got a call for the lift assist at this healthcare facility. When we got there, we just had to pick somebody up and put them in the recliner. So, we pulled somebody off of a true emergency situation to go do that because of their lack of staffing. And I think that if we get the scheduled fees for the fire department goes in, that that would probably curb that. I don't know if there needs to be more detail to it or not, but, uh, that was our train of thought there is if we are on an emergency situation and it's just that, well, we have one unit on a lift assist, let me say. If we have a unit on a lift assist and it takes twenty minutes to do that and we're three minutes in and a true emergency comes out, we cannot leave that non-emergency call until it's completed to go cut somebody out of a wrecked automobile or take somebody out of a burned building. We have to complete that non-emergency call. And, uh, I think it just opens up a can of worms if we don't do something to get this curbed.
Well, what difference, uh, Commissioner, would it be if after four, I understand four calls, they started paying? It's gonna be the same, I mean...
We actually have that on the, on, uh, residential's is a four, after four. Cause we had, we've been...
And the people are using.
So, I'm, I'm asking a question and, and not being facetious, but what happens after four? Are you going to just leave them laying there?
No, no, you'll still do, we'll still do our job. We're in emergency.
Or let's say after six, I mean, and they can't, you don't get no, don't get no money for it. And they call again. Will there ever be a time when you say, we're not coming, you've not paid your bill?
Well, this actually came up a couple of years ago and we thought about doing it at that time and just never put it in writing. But the way it's drafted in this proposed schedule of fees is we would do a fire department call for residential, non-emergency. You would only be charged if it was excessive, meaning you called more than four times in one hour. So, on that fifth time, they would still respond. It doesn't change the SOP at all or the way they respond. It only says that we're gonna send them a bill for that fire department charge. We have never charged for fire department calls, but plenty, plenty of places do. Like some places, every time you call the fire department, if you look on your homeowner's insurance, there's actually a provision there for paying fire department calls. We don't charge, but, um, I think some of y'all might remember the last situation that this had in a residence where he would get drunk and fall out of his chair onto the ground and he would call nine-one-one and we would be dispatched to come pick him up. And there would be biohazard in the floor as they tried to approach him, which, which all of our firemen understand is part of the job and they're ready to respond to that. But if he would call three times a week, then at some point you have to say, there's gonna be a penalty for you abusing the system. So, it would get two hundred and fifty dollars a call. And you're right, Mayor, it may be very tough to collect that. They would still respond and we would start sending the bills for, you know, anything over four times. But I think what Alan is more concerned about is the healthcare. Um, obviously, these patients are paying a price to the healthcare facility. And the healthcare facility is using the fire department as additional staff that they're not having to pay.
Yeah, I can see that.
So, they're abusing that. So, I think that's more the concern on this is, is there is a different price fee put into this. We have to adopt a schedule of fees pretty much every year anyway, cause things change on the state law and whatnot. This one is adding a fire department call. It's adding the building charges because we just adopted that resolution to use city facilities. So, that's gonna set a schedule of fees for that if someone wants to use a city building. But then this also adds a fire department call. There's one for excessive, meaning anybody who calls more than four times a month for a non-emergency. So, if someone's got cancer and there's, they truly have an emergency situation four times, that doesn't come into factor at all. This is only...
Our guys are good about, about, you know, you ask, for example, the healthcare facility. You ain't go ask any of our guys and they get off of that call, was this an emergency or not? Yes, that was true emergency. We don't have any problems with that.
No matter how many times.
Yeah, it's the abuse of the, come up and get granny on pot, off pot and put her in bed.
And here's, here's what I want to remind you of from a, well, and John is better qualified to say this than I am. But I have had to act as the city's representative in the lawsuit where we were just doing a lift assist and we got sued for it along with the county, even though it was the county that was providing ambulatory service and the ones that actually lifted them. The more times you go out to somebody that's abusing the system like that, the more likely it is we're gonna end up in a bigger situation. So, this only applies to non-emergency. I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that. We're not talking about emergency calls at all. There will remain no fees for...
It's hard to believe it's the cost of the nursing homes are getting for each patient. And you can't tell me they don't have more than one person that can help lift in a non-emergency situation like somebody laying in the floor. They bound to have enough staff there to get them back in.
Well, that's the problem.
Well, that's, that's nursing home problem.
Oh, yes.
Right, and they're, I mean, they're relying on the fire department to fill that gap.
And, and why would they want to put somebody on as long as they get us...
As long as we, you know, as long as we understand. I know y'all do a great job. I tell you, I appreciate, one, one friend of mine, y'all had to go sometimes two times, three times a week up Donny's, you know who I'm talking about. And there's no way that his wife could have got him up and y'all guys were right up there. People appreciate that. So, uh, any more discussion? Do you want to vote on this tonight or table it till January, just to make sure we're all on the same wavelength? Or do you want to adopt these fees tonight now that we've got an understanding of what we're doing?
I don't want to figure it out till January, cause I think, I think we'll need to have talked to these nursing homes supervision. See what we come up with, let me make some of these calls.
Have you talked to these nursing homes? Are they okay with this fee or are they...
I haven't mentioned this. I've been to talk to them about the excessive calls. One in particular that has, has been abused quite a bit. Of course, you would have to include all of them, all or none. I have yet to receive a phone call back from the CEO or the site manager. It's just always been the charge nurse there whenever I look to talk to them.
Is this one down the road?
Yes, down, no, down this way.
Sixth Ave?
No.
Or eleven?
Monroe Street.
Monroe Street. Monroe Street.
And we've had this issue with them before. And it's, it's a reoccurring issue. And there's another one that we've got a little bit of an issue with, another nursing facility.
I can see this one out here. They've got skeleton crew out there. That, that's probably true. One employee, maybe all eight out out there, I apologize. That's, that's a problem. Okay, we'll table this to, uh, January and talk about it. John, you and, uh, Alan, do what you can to make sure we're all on the same page. All right, anything else come forward this evening tonight? Boy, this has been a lot of meetings. Tommy?
This is Richard's father.
At this time, uh, we want to recognize the young man that we have all learned to, uh... I'm, I'm kinda hesitant talking about love, but we have, uh, Tommy has left us from the newspaper. I tell you, you're getting all this, right?
I'll come back to yours, though.
We had this set up for September, but he's not come back to see. As always, something was happening. But Tommy has been a true blue guy of the city of Sweetwater. And so, Tommy, come up here, young man.
Yeah, I thought you had that bird.
I thought you had that bird.
Well, you know, that's what it is. Uh, he, he likes you so much. He wanted to be here for this, this. And it's just what it is as a certificate of recognition from the mayor and the board for what you have done for Sweetwater. And we honor you tonight for media coverage and commitment to excellence and public relation that you have given to the city of Sweetwater down through the years. I know I've been here since two oh nine and you, you were coming in. Uh, but anyway, you have helped contribute to the success of Sweetwater with great coverage. You have created a strong presence to the community through the newspaper. And you have exhibited a strong worth ethic, create vital relationships and displayed impartial reporting. And we've not seen a whole lot, if any, fake news from your point of view. In keeping with journalism integrity, while we just want to recognize you, Tommy, at this time and put a seal of approval on this certificate to make it official that we miss you, we wish you the best of luck and we appreciate everything you've done for the city of Sweetwater.
Well, this was a long meeting. I told my wife, "They did about fifteen minutes. They got out." They had it all worked out in the workshop. But anyway, thank you so much. What an honor. So nice of you to do this. I enjoyed it. It's been nearly twenty years and wow, all the great things y'all have accomplished. Business center, the splash pad, you named it, everything you said you were going to do, you did, and it just keeps going. I was so proud to be just a little part of it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I would like to say one other thing about, and I'm sure everybody notices, from The Advocate, Elko Laker, Sweetwater Valley News, nineteen fifty up to two thousand, part of two thousand nineteen. We have all of the newspapers right back there in the back. And, and Tommy, we understand, is the one that saved them from being destroyed and letting us have it. So, Tommy, uh... That is a treasure trove of information that we could never replace. We appreciate that. One other thing, on a sad note, Clint Riddles, Intensive Care. I'd love to see him a little while this evening. And, uh, Clint is in critical condition. So, let's remember that family in our prayers and thoughts that, uh, God's will would be done. Ninety-eight years old. He's had a wonderful life. He's been a friend of the city of Sweetwater and we love him dearly. And, uh, God knows best, so let's just, everybody remember the family. Have a great Christmas and we'll see you back. I doubt if we will have a workshop. I think we will do away with that unless we have really something urgent to come up. So, have a, a great Christmas and a good new year and we'll see you back here in January.
Christmas parade.
Huh?
Christmas parade.
Christmas parade coming up Friday night.
December tenth.
December tenth, six-thirty, police park dinner. And this has got things set out there. December tenth, six-thirty. December tenth, six-thirty.
Back in the fifteen.